...
Counselor, it's ready.
Present.
Counselor Livingston.
Present.
Counselor Brown.
Present.
Counselor Haley.
Present.
Counselor Paffstrat.
Present.
Counselor lots of.
Present.
President's here.
Present.
It's all set up here.
I put a couple of minutes from June fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand and ask for your approval of this meeting minutes from the June of two thousand nineteen.
Second. All papers. Not too long, we have five minutes to speak. Please be respectful and sign in and say to Navy, your justice.
God bless you all. Okay, I can also like I was gonna say, I've only been here forty-three years, forty-four years, that's a very short time. The, uh, we have a lot of good businessmen in this community, and I believe you'll be hearing from one. He's a small businessman that I personally know. And I met him here at Sonya or climbing. And, uh, he, I've been in his stores and they're well-run. Uh, he's a religious man, he does not sell alcohol. And he had some problems, and he cleaned up a problem location. And, uh, apparently there's some kind of cigarette war, uh, where people are selling cigarettes below the state minimum. Now, this is a constant problem. Where they're getting their cigarettes? I don't know. Uh, but, uh, it's gotta stop because, uh, his business is suffering. There's some losers over there. So, you got a guy like this at cases. And he's gonna tell you more about it, but I personally pause for him. He needs a, a credit to this city if we, or if everybody was like this guy, we'd have no problems, but unfortunately, they're not. So, this, this city licenses businesses. So, that's, that's where you have your authority. You know, violation of law is not compatible with city licensing of business. So, that's it. Now, on the sewer plant, uh, oh, pardon me again, the county school here, we use an apartment idea. You know, isn't that nice? Isn't, isn't, isn't that great? Isn't that a wonderful community where this woman put her heart and soul into something? You know? And, uh, she gets the shaft from Casey R. I mean, this is absurd. In a lot of ways, it's amazing what you can accomplish if you don't want credit. I don't think you want credit, but, uh, that's it. That's the way they do it here. Now, uh, uh, a hundred and forty-four thousand for this guy with Greg Sunken. I mean, George Hamilton was a movie actor, and he was known for his sunken's. And, uh, he would go all riding when he was not working, when he hit the skids. He was so well-respected, he had great sunken's, and he'd get free hotel rooms and everything else. Uh, anyway, this guy had a sunken that was worth a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Now, he said he did a study. Now, this era of computer board, anybody can take something and put it into a computer and get some papers out. So, here's this, uh, you know, well, the question was asked by Dan Livingston, where's the study? I don't have a study. There, we don't have it grinded, we got some binders, some milk. This is a hundred and forty-four thousand dollar job. Now, Greg Dini said, Eric Dini said, well, you know, we gotta try this. Well, wait a minute, there's a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, we lost it for a request for, uh, proposal. I mean, you know, I thought it would cost me zero. You know? Uh, and then, Ken, public, private partnership. Wait a minute, wait. Uh, the equity is sewer, that's the equity, that's the operator. Who, who, what's, what's their equity? Where's their equity? If it's a partnership? It's not a partnership at all. So, uh, I don't know, I mean, I would see the big one from this guy asking how much you got an hour. I, I would, I would get all legal bills and see exactly, uh, you know, just what you're paying for. Because a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars is going on a lot. Now, Mr. Paffstrat, I told you this before, Mr. Paffstrat, the mayors of Johnson City, they took a tour of the sewer plant. They talked to Jacobs employees, request for proposal literally states, no contact between the bidders and public officials. None, zero out of company, not a wink, not a phone call, nothing. You got Jacobs engineering, you got a request in for, for, for the contract, and you're talking. You can't do that. And this invalidates proposal, and you know, they cannot, they cannot be allowed to win this bid. And I suggest you go back right to the beginning, because apparently, people didn't know the rules on this job. How can they, uh, the, the grant is being dropped, because people have blood lock, they're putting black top.
Counselor.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'm gonna, I'm gonna listen to the tape, find it out. If I get shortchanged, you'll have to, uh, give me more. Thank you.
Who else is ready to speak?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Kenny Greenley, and I'm the C S C A Central Region five president. I'm here today to talk about post-privatization, the thinking of Johnson City's joint sewage treatment plan.
Excuse me one second, sir. Um, you live in the city?
No, I do not.
Okay, okay. What are the suspected rules?
Well, that's the suspected rules for evolved city.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Over the past month, you've heard from the plant staff as well as many members of the community, and a number of issues have been raised over this period of time. First, the cabinet impact of privatization on the employees of the sewage treatment plant. Staff at the plant have been lobbied for professionalism and expertise by members of this council as well as city staff. And yet, no one has been able to tell them what the potential impact would be on their jobs. The claim is contrary to the desiccations of the issuance of the Parrot P itself, which claims that staff does not have expertise to run this new facility. Their jobs are civil service casket, and they are training constantly to make sure that they have the knowledge to do their jobs effectively and efficiently. In fact, you work, pay them to be trained right now. You have heard from both management and plant staff who have testified that they have the necessary knowledge to run this facility, and that it really is not that different from the way that they currently do their jobs. You have no idea what kind of stress this has caused for our members, who now have to rethink their whole lives. We have members saying that they will not, that they will leave the community that they lived in and possibly, uh, the state if they are privatized. Our members work their tails off, and they deserve much better from all of you. They are here because they care, and that is exactly what you would be losing with a multifunctional corporation taking over their work. You lose members of your community who care so much about the impact of their work on the community. There are accountability to you all. Can you guarantee that the same accountability with a different company? Our members have led to work in this community for decades, they bring experience and genuine interest in the outcome of their essential work. They fish and swim in the rivers as much as anybody in this community, and they actually care. After spending almost three hundred million dollars of the public's money, public privatization heated me on the table. You are essentially asking the public to pay for a project, and they give up accountability. Just think about that for a second. One of the biggest and most expensive projects in the history of the city and the county, and then we let a private company run it. I understand that you're making a decision, and that you all say you have to wait to see what the bids come out of. But just think about the whole issue, uh, in the context of the plant staff. They have done an incredible job, they made it through severe flooding to deteriorating infrastructure, all while operating the plant in effectively, uh, as effectively as possible. They have done and will continue to do a fantastic job for the community. The city claims that the goal of the public-private partnership is to allocate risk, uh, so there's no accountability at all. To that, I ask, who's more accountable? Public sector employees who are vigorously tested and multiple layers of oversight on the public bodies, or private corporation looking to serve their own self-interest? Lastly, I want to focus on the idea of shipping accountability. As Bruce Toney said on one, he said, in, in at least three separate times.
It wasn't served.
And my question is to that, where is shipping accountability? The only things that the mayors do not want to be accounted for are the pending double sewage rates and their own values in regards to this construction and the planning of the plant. Thank you for listening.
Good evening. Your attorney, yourself, since we're in the water plant. I'm asking out of this, but I'm just gonna hit some high points, and then we have five minutes. I'd like to respond to Mr. Paffstrat, Mr. Tony Hade, six seventeen, the eleven eighteen city council work session, as they relate to the joint water, sewage treatment plant. Uh, you mentioned you could have termination with cause of Patrick problems, and I would ask you then, look, did you go to the second highest bidder, like four or choice? Start over with more money, how many? File another series of eternal lawsuits with more money going through Mr. Toney, your representative. There was no written report. Mr. Toney was ever tasked to recommend the contract management, and he did. Unfortunately, he was not asked to look at the least expensive or most efficient solutions, but then he doesn't have that background. His kind of survival expectancy that the next earthquake must come from, he is sixty miles away. Current plant management has over eight years of prior experience actually managing this plant, not a small Patrick, though, housing development satellite plant that goes in Pipsy, or the be older than plant in Bloodsberry, which suffers wastewater rates twice as high as the national average. They're paying eleven dollars and nine cents for hundred and fifty feet, and Pippin is paying five dollars and thirty cents for hundred feet. It's an actual bider, but for a patented plant. Picture five point one five million gallons a day, and he said he hasn't had experience. Judge looks sixty-five million, they want a day plant to do, I think he died at the beat. He talked about dozens of people, he interviewed the plant, and I found two, yeah, three great. No more accepted to meet the board members, and I have spoken to dozens, we say they have not spoken with either Mr. Tony Hade or Mr. Paddling. There are three, only three dozen employees, so he was either a raw plant or talking to contractors. The CMMS, that he mentioned, they can bring to the area computer maintenance management system, we've been using one since two thousand fourteen, which is an industry standard now. He shouldn't have known that, and he would have if he'd asked, if he did manage. Parts of scale are not credible, they're looking for those hard to write, rated one plant to bring online, but I think again, it's more due diligence on his part. If all the utilities expenses are passed, there's just what will a contractor do, the maintenance? He already paid without part of it, so there's no savings or benefits there. We have skilled workers, they can pick jobs, it's cheaper to bring in someone who has needed for a few days. Same as they would, but we use the lowest quote, not our sister provisions. Local workforce, employment benefits, the community, and what happens if the equipment and labor is someone else's concern? Mr. Toney used contract that wrote meaning as an example of current city contract expense, and I'm not sure whether the city or the village lets the payers decide, we mention how many scripts will be paid, how often. They are specifically tasked to go away with jobs. You stand ready to give us the new plant? It is more modern, similar to the old plant, in many cases, it still is an old plant. Same two factors, same three digestors, same CNL cells, one through eight, and that includes for decades. We did get no CN cell in nine through fourteen, or with. From two thousand six, we can have a forty-five million gallons a day for ten to fifteen million gallons a day for Johnson City. The new plant only has five million gallons a day per person. We have run a similar plant, the past, it was out. I would also caution the council, trust me, it's going at the total cost, what the city and Miller's will not be taking out, it's been under the board's budget in the past. Someone still pays the debt service, someone still pays the local systems costs. It may be a test, but great payers still ultimately funding the overall treatment, overhead and debt costs. And since I have the last of time, I would point out, currently, in two thousand eighteen, management accounted for four percent of the total operating points. I'd love to one minute. Kevin, so I have a question you would like to ask me. I'm encouraged to read my bullets, I think Mr. Toney is selling it in the effort which we call, he presents a very good picture, he makes it sound great, but there's no substance behind his words, just as there was no report to add him up. I'd love to respond to his report that I've had offered. The client still has not heard an official notice or a comment or memo of what's going on. We get this better. Mayors of major communications, what it signs, we should be able to, we should be able to expect within hours, when the community had an average, why has it taken half a year for the lights to know what's going on? Anyone else, who's ready to speak? Help me count that.
Martin, one eight, six forty, Street. Good evening. Um, as I just said, my name is Martin Watchen, six forty, Street. I'm employed by the empty waste water treatment plants and the Canada last four years. I've been a homeowner for thirty-three years in the city, uh, life long, East Side, as with my dad and my grandfather's. Wow. I know that, uh, doesn't mean much to most of you, but it's a little hard to me. I wonder how many people from the new company who really care about our community know what's going on? And it's, okay, so, the, uh, homeowners rates, we don't mind pub, obviously, because it's three hundred plus, and everything else is pub rate. So, when it comes to a good time to privatize the plant, so we can fool the hardware homeowners of what the privatizing will really cost, time is everything, that's. To me, that's, that's a dishonest way of doing business. Doesn't it make more sense to see what the operator costs, the homeowners, and then see what the privatizing could cost in the future? So, can we think long, think hard about your decision? Our future depends on you guys, and I'm sure you'll be the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Richard Janacio, president and homeowner of Piggerton, and a candidate for that seat over there. And, uh, the more I hear about this sewage treatment plant, the more disturbing it comes. Look, the, the thanks to Dan, I saw the video of Monday's meeting. Thanks for Conrad, Chris, and the right questions. It seems that what should have happened was, we should have like a research study where they described on a written report, the methods used, data collected, analysis of the data, and conclusions. And it should also include all the options, so that the elected officials, which is not just the mayor, but the mayor and the city council, and in Johnson City, the mayor and trustees, can make an informed decision, and the people can be confident that that decision is made based on facts. Instead, they must like paid a hundred and forty thousand dollars for a sales pitch masquerading as a report, and the report was false, so there was no way to say what facts went into it, we just heard a bunch of conclusions, and many of them are unsupportable on their case. For example, the notion that if you can't operate a plant that's falling apart, you can't be trained to operate a plant that supposedly is state-of-the-art refurbished, and if, if that new plant is more of a problem to run than the existing plant, what are we paying four hundred thousand dollars for? Good question. From the beginning, there was a problem because the process went on, we didn't find out about it up to the beginning of May, whereby decisions were made behind closed doors. The biggest decision was just to avoid one of the options entirely, and just focus on ushering through a privatization scheme. And, uh, this is not the way government should work with democracy or a company. It seems more like something you would expect of an app. So, my hope is that we will get rid of everything that's happened to them, back to square one to a right. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Brian Swan, I live on the south side of Eaton, McNamara Ave. Uh, I just want to say I want to take a slightly different angle on things. A very powerful thing that we've accomplished over the years at the plant. Uh, for example, there's the Piggerton marshlands, the old ones, where they were replaced, they were troublesome. We had issues with, they would wear out, steel would wear out, so we would go down to the bottom of those pits, down at the bottom of the channels, with a big old gate now, with Piggerton sewage underground side, but we would be down there grinding, cutting steel, welding, measuring, making sure that these things were precise, they had to be precise, they would once I come down, they'd pretty come stop. They were twenty-four seven, and they worked hard, and we kept it running. If they had to have people come in to do a contractor job on that equipment, it would have cost three figures, thousands of dollars when we did it. And our head mechanic had faith in us to let us go ahead and do it, and we did. Uh, another example of that is the TPS grinders, this is the Johnson City flood company, two channels, two grinders, side by side, and they are cylinders with really aggressive teeth, okay? They spin, they'll quake up two high fours, bigger cans, all kinds of stuff. And on the CMMS thing that we have, that we look at, we got it every day, it comes up once a month, we have to go there. One guy's up on top, running the crane, two guys are down, down thirty-five feet, and we raise it up a little bit, we spray up a fire hose, clean the heck out of it, inspect it, set that down, and put it back in the service, and we do the other one. Every six months, the CMMS tells us that we have to go to TPS and pull these out and inspect it. The reason we have to inspect it is that there's gears in there. One time, we pulled one out in the gear, the one whole side, this one is TPS cylinders were spinning, we had a gear there. Took it back to the shop, Franklin Miller's company that makes these things, and they suggested that we send it back to whoever Franklin Miller's. And again, our head mechanic had faith in us and said, take it back to the shop, and we built it, and we did, we did. And if we sent that back to Franklin Miller, we probably lost about twenty grand, maybe more, you know, because they're, they're very complicated. So, we put it back in the service, and right now, as I speak, it's, it's spinning in one of those channels, right, you know? Hopefully not two high fours, but, uh, okay. Another thing I wanted to talk about was, when we had the flood, law fell, it was, it was raining, and the night before, we came to have a second shift, our vacation, and along with administrative people, Kathy was down there, we, we were going down to the basements before the, when the water was coming up, we knew it was gonna flood, and we were taking out electronic pieces of equipment to try and salvage what we could, and we did that. We primed up the stairs, heavy equipment, and we saved a lot of money, you know, things that maybe FEMA didn't have to talk about. Uh, there's also a huge snail problem, we had to, the other operators had to bust their homes, and that's a whole other story I don't want to get into for the time, maybe one of them to talk about. Uh, we put in very complicated plumbing systems, um, through steel wire, all the main pumps, we do that, that would cost a fortune, I had somebody come in to do that, but we do that. Our head mechanic is a master plumber, and he's also a great guy, and I respect him probably more than I respect him currently, okay? And having said that, there's another guy, Elliot, he is, he's a genius, and he knows more about that plant than anyone, basically, so. So, who's either one of these guys, or any of the other really good people that we have that have been staying in the building? Man? And any, to lose any one of these people would be a travesty, would be terrible for the great figures and power of the nation. Uh, Mooseker told me, call us good soldiers, I never saw him, nobody saw him, except that Charles sent two people, so. Again, he's a salesman, he privatizes, and we've got this, and thank you on your time.
Thank you. Anyone else, who's ready to speak?
Hi, my name's Emily Christian, I'm living on the south side. I am not affiliated with the sewage treatment plant, but I've been following it for a little bit, um, part of it. Um, I've studied things like the organization of public infrastructure for a few years. Um, it.
Yes, excuse me one second. Move the mark a little.
Oh, fine. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Um, so, it seems odd to me that keeping or eternally promoting people who currently work right now isn't something that's being considered, making a budget for the same way you can make a budget for the, the private companies who would also be bidders. Um, so, it, it's clear that they know the plan better than anybody else. So, it also seems like the faults of the plant in the past have not been the faults of those who have been running it, that they seem like wants to be, claiming after that, which is even more reason to consider them as somebody who would run it, it's, uh, upcoming changes, potentially upcoming changes. Um, privatization should really only be a potential consideration, only if it ensures protection of third employee rights, and benefits like health insurance and retirement, specifically, you know, those two things, one probably others. Um, so, it also seems odd to me that that's not in any of the great criterias, um, for any of potential bidders and stuff like that. Um, but what is in the great criteria is the lowest cost, and of course, you know, value is very important, we want to keep cost as low as possible. But the lowest cost doesn't always mean the best value, especially because it's lower cost, the first thing to know and stuff like that is work performance and marks. Privatization also means giving a lot of accountability and transparency that you have access to now, the theme of public infrastructure. Also, it, it seems that it is the duty of the government, the governing body of the public to produce what the plant does, uh, the, the goal of the plant is there in first place, um, not a corporation or company, um, who would probably see it in a different way and sees goals in a different way. Um, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brian LeBeck. We told you at the Pinton Tux, Pinton Tux, the wastewater sewer treatment plant. What Toby said the plant needs to be, or needs is absolutely correct. Skilled across train staff, meetings programmed with CMMS and a team to terminate issues at a correct time and manner when an issue of disaster arises. The plant currently has and has had some time all those things. After each flood, storm, construction failures, wall collapses, it was our plant staff union management alike working together to get things drained out clean and at our highest level as possible. We are experts. We know this plant inside and out, whether it's anyone or God. We have been training our new equipment the entire process and still have several or things coming online. This is the after, this is after the fact that people have had to pass stringent wastewater courses at Sweeney Morrisville, have had to pass New York State license exams, each grade license, and then a civil service test after the licensing exam for each grade license. And then there are contact hours that we must maintain and by attending more trainings, keep our licenses current and out. We got this. There's not new technology. We've run this before. There's no difference between the two systems, other than the media. Tank size, according to Krueger's own rap, it will be easier to run. Another thing that we've been constantly hearing is that management needs to be looked at. This is the original reason for the study. There, that there is no documented evidence of the management issues has still been identified or specified to us, which branch of management? Political, sewer board, day-to-day plant op, plate, plant management or the construction management? It is the management that is the concern. We might go to contract, ops and maintenance. When everyone, including Mr. Toby, keeps stating how qualified the passion of all our jobs we are. Jacobs had had members of the sister company CH2M onsite the entire time, attending our trainings and harassing our employees. They have been taking pictures under vaults and fences as well. Just today, a gentleman was walking through the plant. Around the plant, CH2M passed on. Their boatload of municipalities was still on it and then they are saying plant management is stellar. They must be talking about sewer board because construction doesn't apply. Board management study, not house maintenance, plant staff management. More disappointment, so if they're, if they aren't happy with that, they need to clarify that not including operators and rate payers aren't enough, that there is gonna be a rate decrease, is why I change.
Hi, I'm Karen Rania. I live at High Javon Street on Newton's west side. And I too watched the video of Mr. Toby on Monday night. And I guess the first thing I want to do is maybe apologize because my understanding of the legislation that allocated the hundred and forty or hundred and forty-five thousand dollars last fall was that it was going to be a study, to study the best form of management for the plant. Apparently, it was an allocation of hundred and forty or hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to prepare a big package. It wasn't a study. And I specifically wanted to say to Councilman Pat Strachan and Councilman Montar, I have the pleasure of working with you two gentlemen. And I know that you've always taken your duties as councilpeople very seriously. And the notion that neither one of you would sit there and accept the answer that there is no report and there is nothing in writing after spending a hundred and forty or a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars at my loan? Because in all the years that I sat next to you, neither one of you would have tolerated that for a minute. I thought that, I think that the whole thing has been very misleading. Honestly, I think this board has probably been misled just as much as everyone else. I still go back to the question that I asked the last two times I was here regarding the IMA and how this has all happened without the IMA and without the sewer board being involved? Because the IMA is pretty clear that it can't work that way. I also will say, as I've said before, there is no doubt about it that the management structure, and I'm not talking about the plant management. I'm talking about boards and the sewer board and the very cumbersome IMA. There's no doubt about it that that needs to be looked at. But this doesn't really seem to be eliminating any of that. It seems to be just adding one more layer. The folks behind me, the folks who worked at that plant have done a stellar job of digging us out of our own, you know, love thoroughly and figuratively on more than one occasion. And I thought that Mr. Toby's kind of cavalier attitude about it being an RFP, that they could keep your jobs, it could apply to your jobs. I thought it was very cavalier. I was offended by it. And yes, I also couldn't find it in the RFP I looked at. So I think that it was insulting. I think that the whole thing was insulting. And I'm shocked that this board would put up with it. So I hope that you are all paying attention. Can someone tell me who the council rep is on the committee? Excellent. So that still hasn't been decided. I just can't believe that you're all just sitting here letting it happen. You have an obligation to the rate payers, to the business owners, to the homeowners, to all of the people who work at that plant. You all represent them. You all work for them. Not just the three dozen or so that work over there, but everybody who pays the water at the sewer. Please, please dig in and demand a little more accountability because that is what is not here in this whole sick scenario. So that's all I wanted to say to you, man. I have one question, I think probably a secret. This is the third time in the afternoon meeting in the last few months and the agendas are always here, but the legislation is not here. So is there any way that we can also have copies of the legislation for the public so they can see, the titles don't always, the devil's in the details as we all know, as we've all discovered here recently? So I just want to throw that out as a suggestion. Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Peavy. I work at the Jackson City Goats Sewer Plant. Essentially your employee. I understand you guys haven't been speaking on this yet. I just feel as your employee, I am obligated to come down and give you our side of the story. I actually had to split the difference to be prepared for tonight after Monday's meeting. I'm gonna tell her something. I have a hard time staying in my seat. That guy sprayed a wire. All right, first of all, Bruce Toby sales pitch yesterday, Monday. He spent two days in the plant. I can't remember exactly what he said, but I know he said he spent a ton of time down there. We talked to two staff members, can't think correctly. He never talked to Dusty. He never talked to me. I'm a community rep down there. Never once mentioned anything to me until the day before or the week prior to the RFP being released. And they let me know that this is gonna happen. Hopefully you guys can keep your jobs, yada, yada, yada. To kind of flip the business with the Jacobs, the CH2M fellow gentlemen that we found today walking the plant, there are a couple of guys that were on the plant tour for the privatization tours. And they are now inspectors for Jacobs. The only thing that Toby got right is we are dedicated. We know what we're doing. And we, we are the team that runs this plant. Everybody keeps going around this word, state-of-the-art sprays, state-of-the-art. The old VAF, we ran it twenty-two months on our own. This is after testing was done and till the wall collapsed. We had no problems running it. There were so many issues with that. We overcame it. We worked as a team. We figured out what had to be done, every kind of range. It was me and another gentleman or two other gentlemen, every kind of range. It was two guys. They cleaned one strainer, go to the next one, go to the next one, go to the next one. Then you have to go back to the first one. If you weren't on top of that, the strainer would get sucked into the pipe and then you have to outmine our strainer. It would get very expensive. The same, the new technology is exactly the same as the old. It actually sets that to be one fifty gauge RFP. It spreads the differences. The major differences are the, well, obviously the better, the size of the tanks, the type of media that we're using, and the size of medium. And then Van Mar smoke goes off and set it down. I've got it. It goes down and set them up. Outside of that, same technology, same bacteria, same thing we've already done. Bruce Toby mentioned that this is the only plant in Fifty Stakes like this. I recently took a tour of Syracuse. They have a lot of here. They have an agroflow system. They have everything that we're getting. So I understand how, hour away, we're the only ones that have this. Training here, constantly going through training. The past probably, I'm gonna say, three months, we've had forty, fifty hours of training. Instructor Jacob, very well known that he's impressed with us. And we're asking more advanced questions than he's had to ask in court. He actually has to go down to go home, do some research and then come back to you and answer that today. And then the big thing, there was a lot of questions I got monitoring was the CMMS software. We use the software. We started using this new software. We had software prior to this. It wasn't the greatest. Twenty fourteen, we adopted a new system. We've been using it ever since. As new buildings, new assets coming online, we're adding them to the CMMS software. And we'll go through the OAM manual to figure out the maintenance schedule. If the maintenance schedule says you reckon ninety-six months inspections, we do three months just until we find out how the equipment's gonna work at our facility. After that, we'll adjust to, up to the maintenance factor requirements. I appreciate you guys listening to us tonight. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Rania from Johnson City, Johnson City, Oklahoma. I'm gonna go in a completely different direction. It occurred almost at the same for us, all issues and concerns. One other point that Mr. Toby made was that he felt that this was the only option, was to go to contract apps because certain political entities don't want the black mark. They have a fear for the legacy. I'm offering another option. This is something I've actually been passionate about for a while. I proposed it to the sewer board and to Johnson City last night. And this is all done in-house. A rebranding, logos, community outreach, community education, career fairs. Everyone knows the rates are gonna go up because of this project. The only time the public cares for us is if there's an issue or the rates are going up and they get vocal about it. But if they understood what actually happens and why the changes need to be done, because they do, they'd be a little more receptive. This is all one-time costs of like a couple of thousand dollars. And it would serve all purposes. We have a contest now with the current employees to come up with a new name, a rebranding. Inside here, this is just a hand drawn sketch of a potential new logo. Pingo Beaver for Newtonson, Johnny Carr for JC. Like I said, this is all done in-house. We have passionate employees that care. It wouldn't cause any overtime to manholes at festivals, fairs, whatever. It would count the same as our contact hours. I just think that there's a lot of positive things that can come from this. And we did participate in our fest two years in a row, twenty-ten and two thousand nine. And it got amazing feedback. People asked questions. They weren't, why do you smell? They actually were interested to know in the process what happens when it actually goes down the drain. And a lot of them think that their drinking water comes from us and it does not. And they think that the only thing we do is sewage and that is not. It is a very actual small percentage of what we do there. Cleveland has an excellent PR program. They've hired a firm. We do it, of course. But their public relations is special now. They have posters and all. Their little teams, stadiums and tubes with their logo on it with catchy sayings about what not to flush down the toilet. They participate in parades. They open houses. They work really well with the community and they obviously do have to avoid heights and upgrades and changes and it is well received. And just within two years that we did the earth fest and explaining the process, I got a lot of good feedback. There wasn't any negative from the community. I think they appreciate that. So this is just another option to remove the black mark as soon as everyone else's rates are gonna go up and that. Just something to do with the rates in here.
Thank you. Anyone else who should speak, public comment? So you know, so you know about closing the porch for the neighbors?
Hello, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Nawal Muhammad. I live in thirty-three Akkor Street and I own a few businesses in Pennington, Surrey. I've been here over ten years. And we're having a problem with those new businesses. They come and take places and they're making it hard for all the businesses who are trying to build right there. Like selling on stamped cigarettes, selling single cigarettes, selling the stuff they're not supposed to do. I already talked to the taxes investigator. They are in Syracuse. The unit is in Syracuse. I've been contacting with them. It's been over two years now. Nothing happened and everything is the same. And I came here. I know you guys are busy. You got bigger things you worry about. And maybe this is a good thing about this. It's a big thing to me. And maybe it's gonna hurt my business. It's already hurting my business. But if we're gonna continue not doing nothing about it, it's gonna get bigger. It's where they're, they're next thing you know, it's all over painted. We have a few sides of the town. They still do nothing there. But we got a few other sides of the town. There's a lot of stores they want to stop. So I don't know. I came here to speak with you guys to see if you guys maybe will help me. I'm willing to help. Any questions? Anything we can do for our neighbors, for the community, for our businesses to build the right way? My name is Nawal Muhammad. Telephone number is six oh seven four two two five four three nine. And I'm always available. Thank you so much and good luck to you guys and good luck to you guys also.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for coming down. I just wanted to ask you, you have a convenience store?
I do, sir. I have a few of them. One in the north side and one in the west side.
So are you saying that the, there's other convenience stores that are short selling? Or is it people on the street that are doing it?
No, it's actually businesses, other stores.
Other stores?
Yeah.
The LA Blue Cigarettes and what else?
Five, five dollars a pack of cigarettes. They get the Semeca from Indian Reservation.
Oh, that's amazing.
Yeah, these guys, they grew on up. They started with one business. Now they have five, six businesses around the area and they tried to open everywhere they could.
You can see in the New York State tax department looking at that for their right away.
I didn't. They're busy. They said they still got so much work in Syracuse. They don't have a unit here for us in Pennington. I wish they had one here in Pennington, but they gotta come from Syracuse.
Welcome, sir. County Avenue, I'm almost sorry, where to say, located by a gas store half an acre a couple of years ago selling blue cigarettes and all the
selling cigarettes the whole time, that's what I got. They still cigarettes, and they only say, selling to people, they don't, like, they're not, like strangers.
Okay.
But nothing changed in the suicide, in the cocaine, still the same thing. I think with Lucy's situation, it's a health department matter, it's a health department issue, so the health department's concerned for the Lucy's, because they're not supposed to sell them, and the cheaper. But for the instant cigarettes, that's from the taxes, the tax force from, from Syracuse. Well, us, us, all that, the community, and this is take part of us, maybe is anything we could do, us, without the taxes, without them, we can?
Which, which store do you, are you at most of the time?
Uh, I'm on the north side, uh, five hundred St. George Street.
Five hundred?
Yes, sir. Bye-bye. Thank you very much.
I was, I was just gonna ask, could you please repeat your phone number again?
Six oh seven?
Yep.
Four two two?
Yep.
Five four three nine. I mean, like, we can get the business owner, send him a letter, we can talk to the, the landlord, or the girl, there's something, you know? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck to you guys.
I'll be calling tomorrow. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to come.
Long time resident of the west side. I don't work at the sewage plant, my connection is that I flush the toilet, I drink the water, I'm, I pay the bills, I'm a regular citizen here. Listening to this gentleman's interaction with all of you brought something to mind, which is, we spend a lot of money on economic development, right? Trying, trying to bring jobs here, trying to get people to open small businesses, trying to have an even playing field, and trying to have a local community interaction, just like you were doing with it, and take the phone number, work together. And that's why, it, it just seems odd to me that there would be any rush to have an out-of-town layer of management introduced between this board, Johnson City, the Sewage Board, and the workers, who are my, my neighbors, our friends and neighbors who are making their money here, spending their money here. Why in the world can't the plant be managed here? So I'm very glad that you're taking this whole issue seriously. I like our tradition of doing things as a community, we are no dumber than anybody else, and smarter than most, we, we can manage our own sewage. Thank you.
What else was in this meeting, the public comment? All right, we'll close up the portion of the meeting. Not for a second. Executive Resolution one nine dash six three, your highest councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask you, has approval of the introductory ordinance zero nine, zero one nine, yes? Second?
This is in order to amend the twenty nineteen Anthony Johnson City joint sewage treatment facility budget for additional appropriations to the city.
Question comments?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question called?
Councilman Schringer?
Aye.
Councilman Lewis?
Aye.
Councilman McRons?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Tadgus?
Aye.
Councilman Lotso?
Aye.
Seven I zero X. Executive Resolution one nine dash six five, considered by, considered employee, I'm sorry, Councilman Tadgus?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask you, has approval of the introductory ordinance zero one nine, yes?
Second?
This is in order to amend the twenty nineteen General Fund budget to adjust areas of personnel service funds.
Question comments?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question called?
Councilman Schringer?
Aye.
Councilman Lewis?
Aye.
Councilman McRons?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Tadgus?
Aye.
Councilman Lotso?
Aye.
President's game?
Aye.
Seven I zero X.
Executive Resolution one nine dash six six, considered by, considered employee, I'm sorry, Councilman Tadgus?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask you, has approval of the introductory ordinance zero one nine, yes? Second? This is in order to amend the twenty nineteen General Fund budget to adjust areas of personnel service funds.
Question comments?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question called?
Councilman Schringer?
Aye.
Councilman Lewis?
Aye.
Councilman McRons?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Tadgus?
Aye.
Councilman Lotso?
Aye.
President's game?
Aye.
Seven I zero X.
Executive Resolution one nine dash six four, considered by, considered employee, I'm sorry, Councilman Tadgus?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask you, has approval of the introductory ordinance zero one nine, yes? Second? This is in order to amend the twenty nineteen General Fund budget to adjust areas of personnel service funds.
Question comments?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question called?
Councilman Schringer?
Aye.
Councilman Lewis?
Aye.
Councilman McRons?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Tadgus?
Aye.
Councilman Lotso?
Aye.
President's game?
Aye.
Seven I zero X.
Executive Resolution one nine dash four nine, considered an MDA, Councilman Schringer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask you, has approval of the introductory ordinance zero one nine, yes? Second? This is in order to amend the twenty nineteen General Fund budget to adjust areas of personnel service funds.
Question comments?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question called?
Councilman Schringer?
Aye.
Councilman Lewis?
Aye.
Councilman McRons?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Tadgus?
Aye.
Councilman Lotso?
Aye.
President's game?
Aye.
Seven I zero X.
Executive Resolution one nine dash six six, considered by, considered employee, I'm sorry, Councilman Tadgus?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask you, has approval of the introductory ordinance zero one nine, yes? Second? This is in order to amend the Anthony Johnson City joint sewage treatment facility policy to allow investment in the New York Giants municipal cooperation agreement.
Question comments?
Councilman Taylor first?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to quickly emphasize the importance of this piece of legislation, just because it's critical that we put in writing into our city code, this guarantee that our employees who are promised health insurance when they retire actually receive it. For those that don't know, haven't been up to, up to date on this specific issue, there is actually no in writing guarantee, uh, of, of this critical component of the City of Biggest Benefits package. This fixes that, uh, and, and will ensure that, you know, there's no surprises, uh, that aren't communicated effectively between our employees and City of Biggest Benefits.
Thank you.
Councilman Schringer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just for, uh, residents here as well as, uh, watching, or will watch rather, or are, uh, just a little bit of the backstory on this, uh, so this actually was codified in the city charter with a slightly different way, as it relates to two factors, uh, the proportion of payment, uh, for eligible retirees, as well as a New York State health insurance plan that existed at the time. Both of those two things were correlated in the city charter. Over time, that New York State health insurance program, uh, quite frankly, dissipated and was no longer in existence, and the proportion that was still in the city charter was now not relegated to anything specific. So what this piece of legislation does is it ensures and codifies in our city charter that our eligible retirees do have, uh, in the black and white, so to speak, uh, the actual proportional relationship of retirement payments and the city. Uh, so again, um, I unanimously and incredibly support this. I want to thank all of our city employees that went through, uh, pretty rigorous rounds of conversations with this, as well as, uh, departments in city hall, and I hope everyone will support this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Are there questions or comments?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question called?
Councilman Schringer?
Aye.
Councilman Lewis?
Aye.
Councilman McRons?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Tadgus?
Aye.
Councilman Lotso?
Aye.
President's game?
Aye.
Seven I zero X.
Executive Resolution one nine dash six seven, considered by, considered employee, I'm sorry, Councilman Tadgus?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask you, has approval of the introductory ordinance zero one nine, yes? Second? This is in order, this is in order to authorize the mayor to submit the fiscal year forty-five annual action plan, except any and all funds allocated to the U.S. Department of Housing and Land Management, CDPG, ESG, and Home and Tyre and Co.
Question comments?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question called?
Councilman Schringer?
Aye.
Councilman Lewis?
Aye.
Councilman McRons?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Tadgus?
Aye.
Councilman Lotso?
Aye.
President's game?
Aye.
Seven I zero X.
Executive Resolution one nine dash four nine, considered an MDA, Councilman Schringer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand and ask you down for this approval for introductory resolution nineteen dash forty-nine.
Second?
Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the New York State Department of Fire, conservation, or inspection of the water facility property.
Question comments?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question called?
Councilman Schringer?
Aye.
Councilman Lewis?
Aye.
Councilman McRons?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Tadgus?
Aye.
Councilman Lotso?
Aye.
President's game?
Aye.
Seven I zero X.
Executive Resolution one nine dash five zero, considered by, considered employee, I'm sorry, Councilman Tadgus?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask you, has approval of the resolution nineteen dash fifteen? Second? This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with the Department of CDPG, ESG, for USA COE, uh, New York State, EEC, pipe and water inspection, maintenance, and rehabilitation.
Question comments?
Councilman Schringer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Councilman Tadgus, that board is excellent, and I appreciate it. Thank you for everything. It is a safe area of hearing, everybody's safe reviews, um, and you support this, and it's required inspection, and I hope everyone else will, thank you, Councilman.
Question comments?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question called?
Councilman Schringer?
Aye.
Councilman Lewis?
Aye.
Councilman McRons?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Tadgus?
Aye.
Councilman Lotso?
Aye.
President's game?
Aye.
Seven I zero X.
Communications from council members, start moving, Councilman Tadgus?
Thank you, um, I'm excited tomorrow, right here at six, we're doing the Masonic Temple, uh, public forum, so everyone's, everyone's invited, we're learning what's going on in the Masonic Temple, and we're having, um, you know, some of your ideas, to keep going, you can put your own ideas, it's what we want to create with the community. One thing I'm looking to do is bring the arts path into the west side, just to be the, the arts, and I want to make sure we bring that path. I'm also looking for housing around the area for artists, local artists, who might be interested in moving homes, to just go and make it ones that we have. Um, there's a lot of stuff that I do that I don't talk about, so it's kind of cool making paths up in the business, but I can add to talk about, usually, I believe, a little bit of experience, we all are, helping out constituents, helping out organizations. Um, I know there's a lot of things that we do that we don't get any credit for, and a lot of times we work for good folks, but we're not the kind of people to, we try to make the best decision we can, um, areas, but to help support, just want to make sure that you know, you still have that credit, and thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I've been, everyone's been here to talk a lot about, uh, privatization, everything. I just really need to take the opportunity again, thank you all for coming down consistently and, and making sure that we hear you, and I promise you that we did. Uh, I mean, it was crazy Monday night. We hired a firm, I mean, we can listen to the meeting where we discussed this last year, we hired a firm to study on management options at the plant. Even other council members here liked it, the fire study that we're doing. There was no study, I mean, there was no study for, for me as a councilman to discern why we're going this route. When one of my constituents asked me why we're privatizing management at the, at the joint sewage plant, the only line that I had was, it's complicated. It's not good enough, it's just not good enough. We have the Juneteenth flag raising today, uh, for those of you who are aware, today is June nineteenth, uh, which is Juneteenth, the celebration of the emancipation of slaves in the United States of America. Uh, it is a holiday that, in my opinion, is not celebrated and, and really well-known enough at all in our community here in greater Pennington, and also, uh, throughout the country. You know, we have July fourth coming in a couple of weeks, something that, you know, most of us, including myself, are always very excited for, it's our Independence Day, but on day like today, it's important to remember that Independence Day really wasn't like, Independence Day for a lot of Americans, a lot of Americans didn't gain any sort of independence on July four. Uh, that happened on June nineteenth. So, um, obviously, there's still some ways to go in terms of equal rights campaigns, there's an exciting event happening this Saturday at Forest Park, where you can show your support of the Juneteenth celebration from twelve to five P.M. Also, this week is flag and minority-owned restaurant meetings in Pennington, uh, they can check it out online, on Facebook, uh, take the opportunity to, to support the locally-owned flag and minority-owned business. Um, it's nice to go out of your way and something like that, and I think today is a nice time to talk about that. Uh, always stuff going on, I think that's it for me today.
Thank you, Councilmen. Uh, Councilman Tadgus?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'll keep it brief, and I just want to address the, uh, people that are here this evening, and, uh, I was, I took a tour of the plant, some of you were there, and showed us around. Uh, it really is an amazing, uh, facility, and driving by, you would never know what goes on inside, but it really is amazing. And I just wanted to put everyone's mind at ease, I appreciate everyone coming down and speaking to us. No one here has made up their mind of what's going on. The presentation Monday, uh, wasn't liking it in, in, in many different ways, and we're waiting for, I guess, Tuesday, and I want to open up the, the, the proposals, and we're gonna go over them, by two p.m. There's other, and, and see if there, if that's not acceptable, what other methods can improve, uh, at that plant, so that everyone is satisfied, and we do the best for the employees, and we do the best for the rate payer, and we do the best for the facility. That is gonna be our goal, and I think everyone here is up to task, and so, we're gonna definitely do due diligence, I mean, it's gonna be done, uh, in the midnight hour, uh, at least not for mine, so, uh, we register, we do the best we can for the, for everyone to see. Thank you.
Question comments? Uh, Councilman Lotso?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I want to thank everybody for coming, and, uh, I just want to address what being anterogranous is. Just because I don't say nothing, doesn't mean I'm not listening. I'm listening to both sides. I want to hear what they both, both of you have said, even though this call, there's one person on one side, and all of you. I have no doubt you know how to manage this place, and I have no doubt you work your tails off to keep us going, you've kept us going through the major disasters we've had, when the walls blew down, with the whole six flood, the twenty eleven flood. I, I have no questions in my mind, you can't do this. I have not made up my mind, I'm not even close to making up my mind. I don't even know what to do yet. I want to see what's happening, I want to see what's going on, I want to hear from the other side, I want to hear, I'm hearing from you every day. I get phone calls, and there's no two hands or two butts in my mind, potential people working, and I, I appreciate it, thank you for your services over there, it's, it's not a decent job, I know. So, and that's really all I have to say tonight, and thank you again.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Schringer?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm hearing from you every day, I get phone calls, uh, there's no two hands or two butts in my mind, potential people are, and I, I appreciate it, thank you for your services over there, it's, it's not an easy job, I know. So, and that's really all I have to say tonight, thank you again.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Stritcher.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, just a reminder to, uh, to everyone that in First District, uh, our monthly, our June monthly First Ward Neighborhood Watch Meeting, uh, tomorrow evening at six P.M. Uh, at the First Ward, uh, I forget the First Ward Neighborhood Watch at St. Michael's, two ninety six Close Street at six P.M. Uh, hope everyone will come down, um, I also wanna congratulate the, uh, or the Sons of Italy, uh, Bennington Lodge four eighty-seven. Uh, they actually gave out, I've almost two thousand dollars to scholarships to Biggins and graduate seniors, so I wanna thank the, uh, the lodge and the four miles and congratulate all of them. Uh, lastly, uh, I wanna thank all of our city employees who have come here tonight, uh, if you hear this, uh, in honor again. Uh, I hope I articulated this well, uh, in the beginning, uh, thank you for everything that you do, and, um, I'm not gonna sit here and repeat everything that we said because, uh, it's quite freaking out there, uh, but, um, I myself, both in the formerly in the private sector and now in the public sector, I'm a very data-driven person, uh, I always wanna hear both sides. Uh, and we got to hear from one side, and I think there's gonna be a process in place that I can meet, um, with all of you to hear, uh, the outside as well. Um, and I welcome that, and I'm looking forward to that, and I'm calling that meeting, so, um, so if you all know that, I am hoping that, I am probably, I'm putting that out there, so I would be honored to do that if, um, schedule is permitting, uh, for this man to do. So, uh, with that being said, uh, thank you again all very much, thank you to our business owners, uh, who were here tonight, our firefighters, our police officers that came down tonight. And, uh, that's it, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. How about Councilman Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I'm really excited to see so many people coming to these chambers, uh, when I first got sworn in. I remember looking out over, over the gallery and seeing all these people here and saying, and I just wanna be sure that whatever we do, we keep people compact, it's more engaging, people are our process. We create our people to fire, and make everything just a little better than they, than they feel like they have a voice to share. Um, I also wanna, you know, thank, uh, Councilman Passat, the mayor, and Mayor Deanius, while we're going on a tour. And I agree, you know, that the plant is unassuming from the outside, you go into hardly, especially Palms, the plant, it's, uh, it's pretty impressive. You wouldn't know it to look bad from the outside, and, um, some of the work has been done here, it's impressive, and some of the construction work, that's given on the Harris, downright disappointing. Um, I also wanna actually correct, um, my colleague in the second, fourth district. He was said that, uh, I think we can actually, uh, listen back to the audio from that, from that meeting that we had uh, over last year here, the conversation happened, actually quite, happened, you know, in the, in the court, and, uh, it kind of be found. So I was really, of course, excited, I was in awe, so I'm really interested to, uh, to hear that conversation that happened back then. Um, you know, and I just wanna, I just wanna say before, just there, when I got involved in, uh, you know, in municipal politics, municipal elements, I know how this, how this works, you know, at the end of the day, come on day, everyone else in the day, then, you know, suck it up, and I move on. Um, and I'm okay with that, I'm okay with that. But the thing that really bothered me about this process is that it just seems, just manifestly, you know, it's, you know, we have a construction project that is costing us money, paying us minds, that, you know, you know, because the project's so, so past here, and it seems like the sensible, and this was responsible, we can do right there. You figure out why the construction is so off track, and to focus power of this, again, that construction project back on track. And then, as the construction's done, give our staff, give, well, the staff report, you know, give our staff and managers to overplan, got to, and calibrate these systems so we can see how they operate, and then figure out, you know, like that, like how to basically manage this structure. And you know what, at that point, privatization is on table, and I'm in the minority, and I will still feel, uh, probably more okay with that outcome having gone through a more physically responsible path of finishing the construction, uh, and owning this construction, I'm accountable. And then, you know, calibrating, giving our staff, you know, it really captivates my heart, you know, these people have been, you know, working through some of the worst conditions imaginable, and they see this, this new plant that's being built as just on the horizon. And then right before they get an opportunity to jump in there, show us what they're capable to do, we throw this, this privatization right on the table. And we, and we lock them out of the process too, it's, uh, it's just, it is bizarre to me. You know, I'm really, you know, looking forward to having more conversations about this moving forward. But I really would just urge my colleagues to, to think about, what's the best way to get this construction back on track? What's the best way to, you know, to calibrate our, our systems? Because in the beginning, you know, that's, that's when we're, you know, put all that money into it, that's when we're gonna see, you know, the best return on our, our investment. Everything is, it's been a lot for, you know, for all the years to start breaking down, you know, people have to jump down into pits to, to, you know, generate solutions. You know, in the beginning, that's gonna be the best time for us to have, and we owe it to them, and it's a great payers, the city, and Johnson City, Taskpares, the castle, all the other things that is still deserved, we owe it to them to, uh, to slow down a little bit, you know? You should, you absolutely should explore what's long, what's good, magic structure. I think it's happened in nineteen sixties, but right now, um, I think it's obvious what we can do, and that's focus on the construction project and give our staff enough to, to do their jobs.
Thank you, Councilman. I have to repeat what, uh, my colleague will say here, but, uh, and I thank you all for speaking, and it's great to see people involved, and I, and I understand why you're here. And I, I do hear you, believe me, and my mind's not made up, I'm not even, this is Councilman Lotso, so I'm not even close to being considered, I just, so. Um, I encourage you to stay involved, and I hope you do, and, uh, feel free to come down, voice your concerns, okay? Well, then I think the most, enjoy.
Awesome.